We want to kidnap him or something, cannot play. Get out of here.
All right, I'd like to call a reconvening to open, wait a minute. Yes, I'd like to reconvene in an open session. I need a motion, there are two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We then, the first item here is to take action on items that were discussed in closed session. It's a new amendment to offer, amendment to offer to purchase, received on night ten. I'd like a motion to reject the amendment to the offer to purchase.
So moved.
It's been moved and is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a vote in affirmative is a vote to reject the amendment to the offer to purchase. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Order of business, I don't think we have any reason to change anything tonight. Public appearances, no public appearances tonight. And then approval of the consent agenda, I'd like a motion for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Recognition information.
We have several recognitions this evening. First of all, I'd like to just comment, we just completed the first week of school and our new and returning teachers, staff, students are off and running on the important work of teaching and learning and a big thank you to everyone. So I was excited that we start, you know, the start of every school year and I think in particular this one, just the vibe, the culture, what I've seen in every building has just been a really, really positive start for all involved and obviously that's a credit to our staff who makes that happen. So again, thank you to our staff. Secondly, recognition of one of our graduates from Monona Grove, Chad Autry, who is currently an associate professor of mathematics at Elon University and the Monona Grove High School Valedictorian, the class of 1999, was recently named as one of the top math teachers at colleges and universities by the Mathematics Association of America, along with recognizing teaching excellence in undergraduate education. The award those, the award honors those who excel in developing education materials using the classroom. So congratulations to Chad.
I just have to say I have Chad as a student and I'm really happy about that. I did not teach him math.
Wonderful.
Take a little credit. Take a little credit.
I should take a little credit.
Yes, absolutely. Also, a big thank you to the Cottage Grove Lions Club. Their Stuff the Bus events in Monona and Cottage Grove resulted in boxes upon boxes of school supplies and generous cash donations to each of our schools. We're very grateful for the Lions Club support. Regarding our coaches and students and athletes, recently the Monona Grove Boys Soccer Program held a mini soccer camp where all the high school soccer players were coaches for the dozens of participants of the camp. All participants had a great time learning, playing and working on their soccer skills. And lastly, I'd like to recognize one of our own board members, Eric Hartz, who was recently featured in the national publication, School Administrator, which happens to be the national publication for our National Superintents Association. As you are probably aware, Eric works on the Campus Connect, a partnership between Madison Metropolitan School District and Madison College that provides on-campus counseling for students as well as tutoring services, help with scheduling and self-determination skills and Eric helped build this growing program. So congratulations.
Here, here.
That's awesome.
Boo.
That's awesome.
Good job, Eric.
Thank you. Correspondence and announcements. Sure.
Again, I'd like to thank all the students and the families and the athletic supervisors who came and helped bag homes in the city of Monona. The football team was actually giving out news and gave a very moving, passionate statement about wanting to help. If you met the people that they specifically helped, it impresses you even more. And then last week, at the end of the week, I went by in the morning and there was not one sandbag filled with sand ready to go and we moved into a major breach, at which time the school bus pulled up and the MG 21 students got out of us and bagged and then went to transport the bags to the major breach. Each and every one of these students or families were just incredible and again, they saved lives. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else? Superintents report.
Oh, that was, I have a correspondence.
Oh.
And the correspondence is just in reference to an email that we all got from the WSB and we've also gotten from Joyce reminding us of the regional meeting on the 23rd, which is here at Monona Grove, so I'm really hoping that we can all attend that. It starts at six. But I'd also like to encourage people, and I'm just wondering if some of you are already planning to, to attend the pre-workshop which starts at 4:30, the registration starts at four, but it starts at 4:30 and that one is on planning and conducting effective school board meetings. And I think those are always valuable, especially because we have a couple of new members. If you guys are going to go, I can certainly find you. I just, because I think it's a good time to talk about the conduction of meetings and it's just a good time to get some more training in that and it's kind of the easy way to do it because it's right here and then it folds into the next meeting. I just want to encourage on the-
Do we have to register for that?
We have to let Joyce know if we want to attend it. So do we have anybody who's already sent their way?
Dean, Dean replied.
Okay, well, I'll email you, but I'm hoping I can nudge, especially the two new guys.
23rd of this month.
23rd. It's of October, so it's not this.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
It is, it's a Tuesday.
It's a WSB event.
Oh yeah, that's right. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Now the superintents report.
Okay. All right, just like to provide an update on the communications plan with regard to the referendum and so on your board docs you see a list of the things that have happened in this past week since, you know, if you recall, we had a very complete report from, you know, Katie, our director of communications, as well as the communications team from EUA and Findorf at the last board meeting. And you can see the team has been quite busy and as we still are moving on, you also, we re-copied the link to the events calendar that was previously shared with the board, so please make sure you take a look at that again. And if you are able to attend any of those events, please contact Katie or Joyce and we'll make sure we get you on the list. But it is really, to me, it's been off to just a fantastic start. The initial presentations that we've had with the groups this, you know, past week, have gone extremely well and we've got some excellent feedback as far as some really good questions that we'll make sure that we include in future presentations as well as some excellent suggestions, you know, as far as points of emphasis, you know, for clarity. In particular, last night, thank you, a number of board members able to attend, where, again, that was kind of a briefing and opportunity for us to get feedback, but that was well worth the time. And we'll again continue to adjust and based upon the feedback that we get and of course our goal is to make sure our entire community is well aware of the facts so they can make an informed decision. I don't know, number six.
I'd like to comment that, you know, I think we're getting some effective penetration with the mailings that have gone out. I was at the Neighborhood Association's annual party last weekend and I feel and got a good number of questions and I thought, A, people were informed and B, there, I think the messaging was effective in that, you know, addressed people's issues and people understood, clearly understood what the issues are and were generally supportive. People didn't in general have, I didn't come across anything with strong objections. So I want to say, you know, I think that so far we're doing a good job of messaging, it's been effective. And these are people, some people have kids, but these are also people without kids in the school district, people who have kids who have aged out, so I think we made effective communication. So thank you. Okay. Board reports. Jeff, community engagements.
We had our first community engagement meeting, it was really good. We just kind of spent the time talking, everybody kind of, I wanted to hear what everybody's bringing to the meeting and we're going to focus, this next meeting, we're going to focus on a couple of things. One, reaching out to people that aren't normally part of our process and we ask everybody to come with different groups that they belong to that we might not know of and we're going to discuss, you know, obviously the next couple of months, everybody's going to be talking about the referendum. And what else? We want to, I know some people show some interest in teacher retention and having open houses and different ways we can, we can get people in the school. And somebody said they would challenge us to get everybody in the schools this year. So I'm going to discuss that at the next meeting, so.
That was, yeah, that was kind of the challenge, get everybody in the community to get to interact, intersect with their schools at least once during the year. I thought it was kind of an interesting challenge, oh, but I thought it was an interesting.
You kind of mentioned about the achievement gap as well.
Right, right.
So I need, I request you to bring those numbers to the group so that they can have a full understanding of what you're talking about. So we need those numbers there so we can see it.
Susan.
Did, did we reply to people that had applied that did not get accepted?
I applied and I replied and I replied to you when you asked me that and I, yeah, I did reply.
I got that question, yeah, I said, I'm going to ask out loud.
I replied and I replied to you, I sent you the exact same thing I sent them, so.
Okay.
Thank you for letting them know.
Personnel committee report, Dean.
Yes, we basically dealt with three items, dealing with the teacher compensation plan on the agenda and the committee reached consensus to establish a minimum salary levels for all teachers with 10 years and 15 years of experience in level three of the teacher compensation plan. We did not establish the amount at this point, but we established that we would put the 10 and 15 years in. You may ask why there's not a five year. You, if you, if you began teaching as a new teacher in the district, it takes you five years to get into the, into that, into that level. So there is a five-year minimum standard when you enter into that. The committee also dealt with the issue of allowing teachers without master's degrees who previously submitted applications for advancement to level four on the teacher compensation plan to be able to resubmit applications during the 2018-19 school year. And the, the, and, and we had, we had some discussion, but no conclusion on the, on an idea to level five, has never, advancement to level five, we have a level five in the teacher compensation plan, but no process or criteria to get there. And we just briefly discussed perhaps using the national board certification as the criteria for advancement to level five, but we had no discussion on it, so it'll be on a future agenda. That's it. Any questions? Okay.
About as good a discussion is, you know, it's, in terms of the timing, we're, we have, often at this point in the year, we're still talking about the current year contract and this year we're actually ahead of that game, which is very nice. So we have some time, we're talking about next year's contract. So we do have time, for example, to fill in the numbers when we wait, wait for the budget situation to clarify and fill in, fill in the numbers as, as the year proceeds, but we can take some conceptual steps here. It's also, the compensation plan has been, has been in place for three years.
Yes.
We're working out the teething problems and it's probably, so one of the things to talk about is, is as we're going forward, we do want to review that and tune it and make sure that it's meeting our needs and it might be a time to start thinking about those, adjusting that.
So if any of you have-
Continuous improvement process.
Ideas or concerns about the teacher compensation plan, why don't you get ahold of me or something, we can get it on the agenda for discussion.
Yep.
So I guess that's it.
It, I think, I think my point is it's time to move away from just getting past the initial implementation and into, into, you know, working on this from a community improvement point of view.
Yep.
I'll just add one quick clarification or addition, I should say. So what Dean mentioned as far as the committee reaching consensus on the recommendation with the level four applications, that will require board approval, so we'll be bringing that to the next board meeting, asking for approval so that we can inform staff as we go through this next application process.
Can I ask just a clarification on that? So these were people who did not have master's degrees before, but who now do?
No, so the, yeah, plan waived the master's degree requirement for three years.
Okay, right.
So some of those folks applied but did not have an application approved, so the recommendation is to allow them to resubmit.
Got it. Okay, that makes sense, okay.
Extended their period of time.
Right, okay.
Now, one of the things that we learned was that of the teachers who have been here for 15 years or more, forty-two percent of them are on, in level four already. So it's a pretty high number of people moving up the ladder into that position. Okay. Okay, next item is the designation of Monona Grove Education Foundation representative. Unfortunately, Eric has, has asked to be withdrawn from that position because he's of his time constraints and the other things going on with the board and so we would like to ask if anybody else is interested in Susan and Dean have both expressed interest in, in doing that. Anybody else interested in doing the MGF representative? Well, the two of you, which one did it most recently?
I did and I, when Dean expressed interest this year, you know, I fully supported that and then Eric expressed interest and I thought, you know, we shouldn't really do this this way. I was not the representative, Jeff was the representative last year and I think Eric was the year before. So I haven't been the representative for at least two years. One of the things, I'm at the meetings right now through the end of November and maybe through December because Kathy Thomas and I are doing the sponsorships. So it might just be easier just to let me finish this year and then let's let Dean do a whole year rather than to come in halfway. It's up to you guys to do what you want, but I'm already kind of going because I have to report on the sponsors.
Dean, is this to the gala?
No.
Celebratory, yes, it is.
But we need a, we need a regular representative.
Yeah, I think, I think that Susan's idea is probably a good one because the gala kind of seems to be a landmark and it might be that the appointment to this position maybe is post-gala to, to post-gala. Yeah, so because that, that seems to be a, a work that would be interrupted, so I, I would say, I would like to be the representative, but why don't you make that effective after, after the gala event?
Yeah.
So you're saying during this school year, but waiting till December?
December.
Right, or whenever in the beginning.
Okay, work it out.
We can, I can read back, we can read back and I'll just see what John, depends upon when they report the whole event and then, again, I'd like Dean to serve the whole year rather than part of it, but-
We'll work it out.
We'll work it out.
Fine. Officially, work it out. I designate you to work it out.
I think we need board action.
Is that a board proof, board action or is it a president?
It's board action.
Board is it? Board action?
So we can make a motion to have Susan Mannan finish out the year and then appoint Dean starting in January.
Finish out, you're, so you're saying finish out the calendar year.
The calendar, it's calendar.
Is that what you had in mind?
That's what I, that's what I'm hearing.
That'll work.
Then he can start in June and do the whole year.
No, he wants to start in January, that's what you said.
Oh, okay.
The motion was to finish out the-
If you say that you was, wasn't doing it-
Early November.
November, so it's, let's just make it beginning January.
Okay, sounds good.
Second, somebody say second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Nice, I leave guidelines for board member communications regarding referendum. Unfortunately, I missed the end of this at the last meeting and unfortunately, attorney cannot be with us tonight. The question is, does everybody understand their role, the documents that we have? Do we have questions, anything we want to discuss relative to what your responsibilities, Susan, those are in terms of advocating for school reference?
I don't really have a question, but I want to say when I read through it, I was kind of surprised because I thought we had stricter guidelines and that, but they're really pretty similar to when you talk about board positions on anything. You really have to always make it clear that it's your own personal opinion unless it's a position that the board has clearly taken or there's been enough discussion that you feel you can represent. But basically, you always have to be careful about that when you're talking to people or emailing or whatever to distinguish between yourself as an individual versus yourself as a board member and so it's kind of similar. I mean, it's something I think some of us try to do in that time anyway.
Essentially, you can say, if you're on your own time and you say you're speaking for yourself.
Right.
You can say anything you want.
Pretty much.
Pretty much. If you are at an event that the district is sponsoring and you're there as a board member, then you, you need to present information. Information could be, the board voted, the board approved this unanimously, that's information, but you want to avoid, avoid expressly advocating for that. Does anybody have any, any areas in which, or examples or anything that they might pick up where there's a, might be a question? All right, clear. All right, very good. Item two, fundraising for the John Clement Athletic Complex.
Okay, so we previously had some discussion about the desire to do fundraising. If you remember, the additional list of recommended improvements, of course, not all are included as part of the referendum and so we would like to move forward with a capital campaign to raise additional funds. So what we have is a draft, Jared Rosen has put this together with consulting with Jeff Schreiner and others and so we're looking at just reaction to this concept and draft and moving forward, the board's formal role, of course, is to accept all gifts, you know, greater than $5,000 and certainly this is a campaign that would hope, you know, far exceed that, but obviously we will make sure that you're comfortable with that. The appropriate, the, the board policies that come in play here are regarding advertising and so this plan does lay out how we would recognize donors. So in the sponsorships as regard, essentially, we need to be clear, it's not naming rights that are being permanently associated with the field and there would be the sponsorship and make sure that we're very clearly recognizing those, you know, larger donors. So looking for reaction from board members tonight to this proposal.
Why not naming rights and what about a scoreboard?
Well, naming rights are a whole different, that would require a separate board action. We, you know, advertising can be covered under current board policy, okay? We currently have a name for the athletic complex, so it would mean undoing that, you know, as well, but that would be another discussion.
You could do without undoing that, too.
You can name parts.
Right, John Clement Athletic Complex.
Scoreboard.
The Google field or whatever, so. What about the scoreboard, is it?
As far as advertising for the scoreboard? I mean, everything's in play and so if we would have a sponsor that wanted to do that, that would be a possibility.
Do we have a price on that? I mean, I, I think this is a good start, but I think it's a little small. I think we got to go bigger on this. Are we going to just leave money on the table?
Buy bigger on that.
Like, I just think, like the scoreboard, for instance, how much does a scoreboard cost? You could buy a scoreboard and it'll be your scoreboard and your name is on it, or?
I'm not sure that we've identified that we need a new scoreboard at this point. Maybe, maybe not, I mean, I think we have to be, when we ask for donors, we want to be clear that it would go towards the athletic complex, but then, you know, depending on the funding that we have, we'd be making decisions about exactly which projects we would fund and so on.
So what if I give 70 instead of 50, though, like, so it's the same thing as 50?
It says 50 plus.
I know.
Yeah, so on this proposal, that's the recognition. So again, that's what we're looking for feedback, if you think we should have a higher level.
You're saying have like a hundred thousand dollar level or something?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's got to be, everything's for sale, man, in my mind.
I think this is a good start, I mean, maybe, you know, see what, where we get, if we get a hundred thousand dollars, whatever, we can, we can get that.
And why only four years for the signage display for four years for 50?
Well, I think this is different than an ongoing advertising opportunity, which, I don't know how our scoreboard is, but for example, that separately you could have available advertising opportunities where someone might buy a squirrel across the scoreboard or whatever. I mean, if, if we don't actually need a new scoreboard at this point, we wouldn't necessarily put that here. I think these are all things that we've, we've already, I know we've already identified all of these things as needs. So this particular thing is a very specific short-term cap, I mean, it's not long, but it's a designated time period capital campaign because you want to focus on these specific needs and take care of them within this period of time. It doesn't mean you can't be thinking of additional advertising opportunities and all that and maybe that can all go into the same fund, you know, ultimately. But it's not like we're going to necessarily raise all this money this way, it'd be great if we do and maybe we will, but as much as we can raise is the idea and-
Yeah, I, I think if we found someone that was willing to contribute a larger amount and we wanted to do something like that, we'd consider that individually and bring that back to the board for consideration.
Then my other question is, is have you started identifying possible individuals you could approach for some of this? Yeah, I don't want any names said, that would be appropriate.
Internally, we have not reached out to anyone yet. We wanted to kind of make sure the board had a chance to react to this first before we would do that. We certainly have started to generate a list of, you know, like I said, internally, but based on the feedback from the board tonight, that we'd like to get started on that, like, immediately.
Dean?
You, you know what you're raising the money for and how much is going to be needed?
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
Do we know that?
That's right there, it's above on that sheet.
This is Andrew.
Oh.
No.
Susan's first, yeah.
What we did at the foundation was when we had a donor that was higher than the top of the mountain, just kind of re-titled it and put all of these things in there and then added something else to the recognition that they were going to get. I, I'm comfortable that if that occurs, we can address it, although without something in there, it's more difficult to recruit than to do that. The other question I had was, how are we integrating the fundraising with the foundation?
So this is something that we believe will be coordinated, you know, through our offices, you know, through Jared and myself, but we would definitely want to partner with the foundation, with our booster clauses as well. There's so many people that are involved here and so we'd like to have this as a district led thing and look at our other groups as partners with us to support the effort.
So there's going to be clear communication with the foundation?
Sure.
Because they have the avenue to move the funds.
No, we do as well. The funds would go through our, well, Jared, I'll let you speak to that, to be clear.
So the district has the ability to accept those funds and put them into a specific fund called Fund 21. Anybody that donates anything to a school district has the full ability under law to deduct that from their taxes and stuff like that. So, and just one thing, I do want to, this proposal is definitely a very high-level proposal. What you're not seeing here is those wording that would be placed into what the marketing is going to look like, that if we have a donor that exceeds our highest level, that we have the ability to come back to the board and, you know, specifically say, I'll just say, you know, identify that, you know, the bleachers are, say, $500,000 and if someone's willing to give us $500,000, I think we're going to have a serious conversation of, do we want to say that the bleachers are sponsored by?
Right.
Or, or, yes. So we had that. And the other part is obviously there's other things in here, it doesn't tell you about, you know, when we say potential signage or anything like that, it doesn't say the size of the signage and all that stuff has to be finalized and there would be a marketing brochure that individuals have when they go talk to individuals, so they understand and there would be a clear process. But we wanted to make sure that this, at least high level, that the board was supportive of this before, because it's obviously a potential of a lot of money and definitely agree with Jeff there, we don't want to leave any money on the table if possible, but we also have to, you know, start and see where it takes us.
If I could, if I could ask a question.
I just wanted to finish on that point, though. The other thing in terms of integration with the foundation, it's not just doing it with them, it's having very clear conversations, because I know at the last meeting, there were serious questions about- So the foundation generally fundraises for the November 4th, 5th celebration event. And if you're going to start doing major fundraising while they're trying to do their major fundraising. And then they also generally send out a letter before the, before the end of the year asking. But I think they've realized whether or not they're going to do that. So I just want to make sure that in terms of timing.
So, this may have been after you left yesterday, so we had this discussion. So I did inform the foundation of this. I did not show this document. I thought it was important the board saw that first. So basically, that we were, I was going to be presenting tonight to the board. And then we'll be on their agenda next month to talk about this plan. And I agree absolutely, we want to coordinate, understanding what their efforts are. But as I mentioned, we also have our booster clubs that are directly affected here. So because we have so many groups that have a stake in this, that's why I think this has to run through, you know, the district as opposed to one of those individual organizations. We certainly have our football boosters, we have soccer, we've got track, all are involved.
I think it, yeah, we got everybody, but I think it would behoove us to sort of take a look at the big picture, the whole fundraising, everything we do to make sure. Part of it is to make sure that we have coordinated in a good way, people don't get hit up over already at the same time. And if somebody could look at the big picture, it would be a good idea.
What about your alumni support? Do we have an alumni group? What I'm putting that because a lot of, a lot of school district alumnis now are not doing your typical five-year, 10-year, 15-year class reunions. They're starting to do what is called the all-class reunion weekend. And that entails getting all the classes together, celebrating all the ones, it's at the fives and the tens and giving them special recognition. But the alumni, it starts off with alumni football game. Everybody at the alumni goes to the football game. There's money generated there. Then on the Saturday, they have the big alumni dance and every class is there. So that, again, generates money. And then maybe Sunday, they do like a all-alumni picnic, which, again, generates money. And you can put this out here with this proposal that we have and show that what we're, what money is going to go to. And say, this is the Manona Grove Alumni, this is all the money that was generated and they support them and stuff like this. So that might be another avenue as well.
I appreciate that. You're absolutely right. And I think right now, one of our challenges, that's something our foundation has talked about a lot, about trying to, trying to, but trying to improve and make sure that it's a complete list, our booster clubs as well. So we have, they all have a piece of that, but there's opportunity for growth there.
The foundation does have that list.
Okay.
And they do have control of that list. And they generally do do a full mailing, but are reconsidering that based on, that's why it's really critical they use that piece.
They do an annual mailing or no, monthly?
Clearly, what this varies is at least every month it seems to be.
Yeah.
Quarterly? Actually, as I said that, I was going to make the quarterly. See, I, all my kids come to my, same, my house because they have never changed it at the rest of stuff.
Eric, you have a comment?
I would like to see another, I like the priorities, but I think if we're going to have fundraising, there's, I'd like to see maybe like soccer sideline shelters on there. I think that would be a good thing that we could utilize that field for soccer. And that's something that we don't have, that would provide benches, benches with shelter for soccer teams while they're, you know, on the sidelines. They're portable, they're something that can be moved. They're pretty inexpensive. I mean, several things, you know, I think $10,000, $15,000 you buy two for. But I think that would help with maybe some people that would want to donate for the soccer program, knowing that that's also something that could be included there. Especially since we're not building the new field.
Susan?
I would recommend that, that the other sports that utilize that field in whatever way, soccer for one, that Jeff Schreiner meet with those people. I mean, understanding that Eric does help coach one of the teams, the other teams may want something different. So my bunches would never want a shelter. They want to be out there on the terrain or shine, you know. But, I mean, Jeff is in charge of us. And I think that direction should come from, nominally from administration and the master group.
All the groups absolutely will be involved with this. And I'll be honest, I didn't realize until you just said that, that we don't have them. Personally, it's ridiculous that we don't. I'm surprised. So that's, I mean, if we have to do it through fundraising, fine, we should have them.
Yeah, we're going to be, that's an all-purpose field for football and soccer and track. I would just like, especially since we decided to do that and not build the other soccer field. We had something small we can add to make sure it's more inclusive for every sport.
I would like to ask the question, because there's a number of track architectures, there's another, some of our big pieces. And I think, you know, with the amendment to this, and I want to know how the members of this board feel about, I think, the issue just raised, naming rights. For example, if somebody gave us half a million dollars for the track, just, you know. Would this board be open to, to not changing the name of the athletic complex with John Clement, but naming different parts of this? And going beyond what's on here? And not that we have to put anything in writing right now, but is this board, or does this board have severe objections to that? This way that if somebody does come through, you guys have some idea where the board stands on the issue. Susan?
We have some draft proposal right now about.
For policy?
No, about naming.
That's it's come to this board.
No. No, but have you, I mean, it's not confidential. I mean, you've seen it, right? Oh, okay.
Jeff?
So I was going to say that. I think before this goes to anybody, it's got to be tightened up and a lot more specific. I think that we need to give you the ability to get all the money you want. Because if I'm thinking I'm going to give you $200,000, but you have to take it back to the board and they watch us do our stupid petty dickering that we always do, and then I'd be like, forget it, I'm done. So I, I mean, when you walk into that thing, I think you need to have everything clearly laid out specifically and say, here, I need this money. You can give me this money. Not, well, that sounds pretty cool, but maybe if I, I gotta go back and get it approved. No. If I'm going to give you $200,000, I want you to take the $200,000.
Advertising does not have to come back to the board, okay? By policy, okay, I can approve advertising. Naming of a facility by policy requires board approval specifically for that proposal.
Then we need to change our board policy.
Not necessarily. What I think what we would need in that case is guidelines of what the board would find acceptable. On what circumstances the board would approve something like that so that you know that you can offer this. And then the board would need to, need to be agreeable that we would follow those guidelines.
Right, right, right.
But generally, if it's a half a million dollars or something like that, I would expect.
I spent my whole life in sales. If somebody wants to give you that money, you don't want to, you don't want to, you want to walk out there with that, out of that meeting with that money, man. You don't want to go to three more meetings.
I think that is, I, again, does anybody?
Not wipe out history.
No, but does anybody object, for example, if somebody gave us half a million dollars for a track to name it? Anybody object on that?
I think we have to vote, we have to understand the circumstances and vote on it at that time.
It's something we talked about in policy when we tackled these discussions a lot, and we decided not to write anything down yet, but to leave ourselves open. We don't have a policy now that prohibits it. So, and we intentionally did that because we wanted to leave it open because I think we felt like we would be, so I think that's how, that was my understanding. So we never laid out a specific, it gave you this much, it gives you the right name. And we didn't want to go there, we kind of wanted to just leave it open.
It would certainly have to be case by case.
That's kind of how we were looking at it.
But I just, but the question is, are we open to it? And I think the answer is yes.
So if one of our former graduates, alumni, like Gabe Karini or Jesse Better happens to put a million down, I hope they're listening. I hope they're listening. Maybe we can really change the name. I think that's what's happening.
And from a sales point of view, I look at this and I have $200,000 to save. And I look at this lesson, oh, it only goes to 50.
Right.
Maybe my interest is.
It's got to be a lot more.
And maybe we need to explicitly say for levels above X, we'll work with the, we'll work with the donor.
Hundred, hundred thousand.
On additional, on appropriate recognition of this.
Maybe price all that stuff out ahead of time, too.
That's hard. I think that's really hard because it would all be so specific.
It is.
Because, well, it's semi-specific, but like, if you're going to put your name on it, you're going to pay.
Yeah, but everything costs a different, you know.
Well, yeah. But we see this, we see what it costs. A track costs, yeah, six, 645.
But how do you do guidelines that cover that and a $20,000 scoreboard?
Just put any name on it.
Yeah.
Well, simple, if you want to pay $20,000, this is what you can, if you go to a restaurant, you can buy a burger, you can buy a filet, right? You're not discriminating against people buying a burger. They know what the price is.
Are you?
I think usually people are interested in making a big donation, like a half million dollars. I mean, there would be some conversation with you about that, and say, for this donation I might expect. Or you might say, you might, well, I mean, there'd be some conversation. Somebody, I doubt that, maybe, well, I doubt somebody.
I was trying to check a handle just.
I just want to make sure that Dan understands what the board is talking about.
I got it.
I just think if it's on a piece of paper, it says $500,000 naming rights for the track, then it's on a piece of paper.
You would be, you would be that specific for the.
I would be that specific.
That we have already.
Absolutely. Because that's not negotiable. Like, if you want to put your name on this track and that's your name.
He's in sales.
It is, your, your name will be on this track for as long as you're in business. But it's going to cost you $500,000.
Until we rebuild the track, as somebody can.
Or for 20 years or 10 years, make it a long area, but not, maybe not forever, but 15 years or whatever.
I, yeah, I think this is something we, this is a policy discussion. We would have to really look into this and think about it. I'm just thinking of the Jason Museum, which used to be the LVM Museum, but then the Jasons came along and gave a lot more money. I think you just have to be real careful about locking yourself in that. It's just something, if we're going to start being real specific like that, that's why we punted on it before. We didn't, we didn't want to be that specific because we weren't, I mean, I think that's part of it, so.
At the, I want to. Prior experience, I went through this where I had a potential donor of, you know, well over a million dollars for a similar type project. And in that case, we did an individual negotiation about the amount, what that name would be and so on. And unfortunately, that one fell through at the time, right when the economy, you know, took a turn for the worse. But I think for that kind of a large thing, I think you do have to take it on a case-by-case basis. Because what if the potential donor was, wanted a name that this board didn't approve of? You know, some questionable business.
Demoles or something, right?
So I think the board has to approve that actual name as well, you know.
Doesn't that make the, the, the case, like, it fell through because of, that's a million dollars, take that million dollars first and then.
Or there's the issue of possibly renaming something that already has and, you know.
So that might be negotiated for X number, the minimum was long, but then that could have, I mean, that's, it gets tricky, that's why.
And some of the, some of those names, new names, may be at an era where you don't recognize the meaning of the name that is already there.
So I, I think we have really good feedback. Personally, what I heard and I guess what I also would support, that if we had a potential donor of significantly larger funds than this, that we should consider, you know, some sort of permanent naming rights. And I agree, I think that's the approach to take. I think we have to do some additional research to think ahead about what kind of dollar amounts we'd be talking about. I think there's good feedback that we should consider having some levels larger than what we have on here. So I think those are kind of the two big takeaways. And then we'll continue to do work on this and we'll keep you informed. As much as we don't want to put this off, there is a lot of, we have to get our ducks in a row before we go out publicly and say, here's our campaign.
And add the, maybe touch base with Jeff and.
About other items besides. Oh, absolutely.
Take that into consideration.
Absolutely.
So I have another question. So this is in the referendum. So if the referendum passes, we're going to, we're going to build this thing anyway.
But they just are 3.5, this is, this all totals 3.6.
That means 3.5.
Can we do the, can we do the, and we can do the fences and gates, obviously. Can we do the bleachers and storage under the bleachers after the track and stuff has been put in? But so you're going to, we're going to have somebody pay for the turf after it's been paid for.
Not necessarily. I understand what you're saying, which is we are, we do have the track and the artificial turf in the referendum. Specifically in the referendum, it doesn't make sense to, yeah, sure, we want to take as much money from people who are willing to donate. We appreciate any donations.
Well, I'm not interested in being the Dean Bowl storage locker.
The question is, should we?
You for the outside fence.
Should, should we make these other things, should we make these other things the priorities, one and two? How does that play?
When people give money, you're giving money for the whole thing unless you're doing something specific. So obviously, the other things would be.
Yeah, we, I guess I would anticipate not asking, do you want to contribute towards bleachers?
Unless they want to name the things.
Yeah, we need that flexibility.
My question is, we have our needs too, like the tennis courts and all that other stuff, so how does that fit into here?
Right, all right. And actually, Jared and I just had that conversation this week about, you know, should we start looking at rolling tennis courts into this? We don't have a firm, right now, we don't, we're not confident in, we have not obtained approval yet from the city of Madison that we could even do a tennis court project. So it'd be a little premature right now, but that's something that we want to get rolling on as well. And so potentially, that could come into this as well. But right now, I want advising against that, I advise against that because we're not certain we can even get that approval.
Susan?
Well, I like the idea of focusing on when they.
Other Susan.
No, that was it. I just, I kind of like the idea because that's so, which you watch with a tennis court. I mean, just because we know what we'd like to, if we don't, permission is more complicated. I like the idea of really focusing on this complex and whatever it needs, including to get a suggestion. I'd probably keep it as a big fundraiser.
I just want to confirm that if someone wants to make a contribution earmarked for a specific. So I want to make a contribution of this amount of money to the track. That's going to be acceptable, correct? People, okay, I'm going to say it should be because people are going to do that. That's kind of how it works. I don't want to refuse any donation because it's earmarked. At the point where you may raise the full 645,000, you might tell someone that was going to earmark it that we've already met the maximum fundraising amount. Do you really want to do that? But this, I mean, when you're fundraising, people are going to have particular areas. But if it's not earmarked, then it's general, goes to whatever.
Well, I think, I mean, I, if, if the referendum passes, there is money in the referendum to pay for some of this, but it doesn't pay for all of this. So this is like a list of all of our needs prioritized. So if someone wanted to donate, the referendum does cover the whole track, I think, right? But does it cover the whole turf? Does that build in or have part of it online?
It does.
Covers the whole.
It covers track and turf.
So if someone wanted to donate specifically to that, then some of that, yeah, it does, it does end up getting to be sort of.
So that was part of the lengthy conversations that I would say we had is because we're in sort of a unique situation. We're going to referendum and priority one and priority two are somewhat funded in here. If we chose to wait till after the referendum, obviously, it makes it clear, these are the links. Hence the reason that we use the priority because we want to be very clear to anybody that's donating money or contributing money is that these are the projects that we're putting in towards. And so if, but we also understand that someone might be interested in giving something specific. But if, obviously, if someone's willing to give, say, we were ready to go next week and give $100,000 to the track. Obviously, we don't want to throw that away, but if the referendum is passed, doesn't mean that the referendum money has to go for the track. We could say that we have a donor and that can we free up that conversation? But that's why we use the word priority and we haven't listed anything else specifically. Because we might only raise the first three priorities within the first six months and be able to move forward. We didn't want to be to that point where we couldn't move forward because it is a lot of money. So there was a lot of conversation about that. And it's unique if the referendum fails, then obviously, we know that priority one is we have to be out getting that for the track and potentially the turf, so.
So, first thing, there's no, the thing is the max fundraising amount, is there? So, first thing, there's no such thing as a max fundraising amount, is there?
No.
And so this is, when I was working on this, I really wanted to throw everything together, because if you look at it, we passed the referendum a couple of years ago, hopefully pass another referendum this year, raise all this money for a football field, and then people are gonna be done. Like, this football field is.
Artister.
Well, whatever, the whole football field, the football is number one, right? Everybody builds their own football. So once the football's done, you're gonna have a lot of people, a lot of money, lose a lot of interest in fundraising for other stuff, unless it's all together.
My thought with this document is that I would make a notation somehow, you know, for 100,000 plus, additional, additional recognition options are, may be available, just so that it's out, it's on the page, so there's an understanding.
Just put anything over, oh, or 100?
I would say 100, yeah. Platinum's are 50,000 plus to 100, and additional, or it could be 50,000 plus, and at the end, you could say for donations over $100,000, additional recognition options may be.
I don't see a hockey rink on that one.
Dean, the Dean Bowls.
It's not allowed.
Like Lambo, you can just, we can just throw the hoes out.
Just, just send me, send a check, and I'll get my name on it?
Right, absolutely. I'll put your face in the, in the center, center circle.
That's an excellent question. What if somebody walks in the door and wants to make a donation, a significant donation towards something that's not on this list? How do you respond?
Case by case.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the reality is, I mean, if we don't have a project, I mean, what?
$50,000 for a hockey rink doesn't do us any.
Right, yeah.
Right, well, that, that is a problem. I know there's cases where they are kind of facing a similar thing, where somebody who's willing to donate about half the cost of a whole new athletic complex with the district would be expected to raise the rest, so they're in kind of a quandary. So that, that can happen, because that may not be, that's not their number one priority at the moment, so.
I think Madison East had that, didn't they? Where their, where their performing arts center, somebody would wanna pay half, and then they had to pay the other half, but they were like, that wasn't our number one priority, so what do we do?
Yeah, I didn't remember that that was the magnitude right now.
I think there's a dumb, is there a dumb leader in high school looking for a sponsorship?
Absolutely. Why are they fighting themselves?
All right, case.
It's like a NASCAR, man, I'll sell anything.
They'll sell anything.
I'll have to sell anything.
All right, sorry, gotta come back to the meeting, there we go. Annual meeting agenda?
I apologize, I just, I forgot to take out, letter M was last year's agenda, I apologize. I have corrected it on board docs, so refresh your board docs if it's, it's just.
I'm sorry.
L, I'm sorry, was, I've moved it on there, I apologize. Letter L was left on.
A year ago, we had additional item.
We, I apologize, I just put it on as, because it was the same, but.
So the recommended agenda this year is just gonna be our statutory allegations for the annual meeting, nothing special.
Okay, hang on a second, I gotta bring that up.
I wonder what that was, thank you.
What do we get? Oh, okay. Um, L, other business, okay. Okay, any discussion, anything we wanna add?
M3.
What's that?
Annual meeting.
Annual meeting, yes. M3. I assume we're going to talk about the referendum?
We'll do that underneath my superintendent's report.
Superintendent's report, okay. Unless we wanna call it as a separate item, because this gets published in the paper.
Right. So we had the operational referendum two years ago, we included it as part of my report. So this will be published in all the places that we've sent out notices, the actual publication in the newspaper is just a sentence, they're calling out where it is along with the entire budget.
Okay, so we don't actually put the agenda in there?
No.
Okay.
It's on the website.
It's on the website, yeah. I thought it went in the paper. Okay. All right, concerns? Do we need to approve this or anything?
No.
Okay. Uh, future meetings, there's a whole bunch.
If we could, before we adjourn, we do need to schedule a meeting date with our teaching, learning, and equity committee, so if we could take a moment now to compare calendars, that would be.
Okay.
So Eric chairs, and then Susan, and.
So it's just, you have just.
The board committee. I guess before we pick a date, are there, during, there's time availability, what would be the earliest or preferred time?
It would be after 4:00 or 5:00, especially if you.
Yeah, after, yeah, after 4:00, 4:30.
After 4:30, okay. So I'm pretty flexible after 4:30.
So, Dan, we don't really need a little more to make this decision.
Right.
No, but we're all here, so everybody's here.
We just take a minute on that, because we've been struggling to get a date, and so we could just.
We can adjourn, and you guys can do it afterwards, it's up to you. Somebody will come and say, okay.
I read the report.
We'd like to come down and see yourself.
What's good?
What do you say, next Wednesday's?
Uh, next Wednesday, that is the 18th.
Hang on, go ahead.
That's the 19th, grab, so we have our.
We engaged with, is it 6:30?
Yeah, so it has to be, what, 4:30, 5 o'clock, maybe?
You want to do like 5, 5 or 5:30?
Yeah.
I'd recommend 5, so at least there's a little cushion between meetings.
I can grab some fries, so.
5 would work.
Susan, 5, so 5, yeah, 5, 5.
Okay, so Wednesday, the 19th, at 5 o'clock. Eric will put you on the agenda.
It's a long day.